Can you confirm we have quorum, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so why don't we, our chairman is not able to be here today, so you get the substitute teacher. No, sorry. So, we're going to call the meeting to order, and I would like my esteemed colleague, Carol Moore, would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand if you're able and join together to pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Are we Zooming today?
No Zoom, we are audio live.
Audio live.
Terrific.
Okay.
The roll call. Chair Wagner. Vice Chair Buckner.
President.
Commissioner Davert. Commissioner Fissler. Commissioner Wong. Commissioner McGregor.
Resident.
Commissioner Bresley.
Resident.
Commissioner Moore.
President.
Commissioner Penrose. And we have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, this is a time for public comment. I see we have a few members in the audience. It does, has anybody submitted speaker slips or cards? None received, no, nobody out there? Okay, please make sure the clerk knows which item. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. We don't have any public comment, but she's going to speak on a particular item. Next up, we have the Consent Calendar, which is comprised of the January 8th Regular Commission Meeting Minutes, which I was absent from because I was not, I was very ill, so I will abstain.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you. I will abstain, all in favor. Thank you. You got, you got that, Madam Clerk, I knew you were distracted, no problem. I abstained.
Doug made the motion and I seconded it.
Thank you. And then everybody else was in favor. Okay, we have no public hearings scheduled, however, we do have Item 8, some items for discussion, and the first one is policy for indemnification of OC LAFCO by applicants. And so, who will be giving that report? Oh, Mr. Tapia, please.
Good morning, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is the OC LAFCO indemnification policy. During the 2024 Legislative Session, Senate Bill 1209 was approved by the Governor. And essentially what that did, it explicitly provided the authority for LAFCOs to require indemnification from applicants that submitted an application to LAFCOs. And so, staff work in collaboration with council to make the necessary amendments to the policy. Staff is recommending that the Commission approve the amended policy, and I'm available for any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you, any questions? Yes.
No, I'll move the item.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Perfect. Record, next item is records retention and the destruction policy. Mr. Tapia, you're up again.
I will have the clerk present.
Well, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. On an annual basis, the Commission and General Counsel have reviewed the records retention and destruction policy. And this year, we identified the major change which defines a record. And staff recommends that you adopt the amended policy. This concludes my report. General Counsel and myself are available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, any public comment on this item? Any questions? Yes.
Where are all these files maintained? Where do you keep them?
Where do you keep the files?
Where are these located? Where are they stored for several years?
Some indefinitely.
In the office area or where?
So, so for OC LAFCO maintains those in electronic version, and then we also have them printed out in folders, in project folders or specifically to each of those areas. We have those stored in a county archive warehouse.
The electronic too.
The electronics are through Laserfish and in a county-based system as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Good question. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, moved by Commissioner Davert and seconded by Commissioner McGregor. Any other comments? All in, yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item also passes, and everything that is in the agenda is redlined for anybody's reading pleasure out in the universe. Okay. Next up, we have our California Association of Local Agency Formation Commissions' membership status. Who will be giving this report? Okay, Mr. Tapia.
Vice Chair and Commissioners, the item before you is the CalAFCO membership status update. So, a little bit about CalAFCO. CalAFCO was founded in 1971 as a nonprofit, and it provides resources for LAFCOs, and it also provides educational and legislative resources to its membership, and it serves as a conduit for the legislature and then also for any local government agencies. CalAFCO does have a 16-member board that's represented by Commissioners from the Northern, Central, Coastal and Southern Region. The Southern Region is represented by four Commissioners, including Commissioner McGregor. Over the several months, there have been several concerns that have been expressed by numerous LAFCOs and staff from several of those LAFCOs. Some of those concerns include the lack of transparency, specifically when there was a modification to the CalAFCO legislative process. Additionally, jeopardizing proposals that have gone through the CalAFCO process, taking in external opinions above those of LAFCO long-term practitioners, for example, EOs. And there are a lack of communication that has happened during the former Executive Director and then also with the CalAFCO Board. As a result, several LAFCO submitted letters of concern, and there were two meetings that were held, one in January and one in February. After those meetings, essentially not a lot of changes were implemented that were substantive, at least to the membership. And therefore, since San Bernardino LAFCO, San Diego LAFCO, Los Angeles LAFCO Commissions have decided not to renew their membership for the upcoming fiscal year. Therefore, considering the lack of response from the Board, the extensive amount of time that staff and Commissioner McGregor have put into this effort, staff is recommending that the Commission consider not renewing its membership and instead redirect those resources to collaborations between the Southern Region LAFCOs. And I do want to note that their Commissions have also supported that effort, and that would really provide educational and then also legislative support for staff and then also for the Southern Region Commissioners. So, staff's recommendation is for the Commission to consider not renewing its membership and sending a letter. And then I also want to have Commissioner McGregor, as he has also additional comments on this item.
Well, you're going to put me on the spot. Well, I'm open for questions from the Commission, but I will give you a little background, just some notes that I had taken. I've been expressing, because I think this Commission for like over a year and a half.
Could you use your microphone? Thank you.
There you go.
So, I've been expressing concerns about this Board for a period of time. And then, as recently expressed concerns about the ED, which Doug correctly told me to be careful, but it just goes to show, in all reality, those concerns that I expressed became reality, and it really surfaced this last year with the actions that they took on the Legislative Committee. And they just basically structured it to really a non-effective group, which really defeats the whole purpose of why CalAFCO exists. CalAFCO exists really for two basic reasons. As we said, it's really provide legislative support statewide and to provide educational opportunities through workshops and through the conferences. And both of those have severely lacked off, in addition to just the Board's focus and cohesiveness. And it really became more prevalent in our conference this year, where just some of the actions you guys were there, you saw some of the, how the meetings were conducted, and then later on, the actions that the Board took and some of the, how they politicized some of the positions on the Board, just reinforced some of the concerns. And in that meeting, I challenged all of them that I don't believe they understand the full extent of their lack of understanding of what the membership needs are. And I blatantly told them that I think there's going to be ramifications far greater than what they can imagine. And since that time, four LAFCOs have now dropped off. I've had, over since that conference in October, I've got correspondence about this. I've had numerous conversations with LAFCOs throughout the state. It's far greater than just the four Southern Regions that are severely questioning the effectiveness of CalAFCO and the need for restructure. We've had, we had a follow-up meeting in January that was, again, very telling on the lack of focus that they had and attention. I'm not going to get into the details. A follow-up meeting on February 7th, another one, reinforced it. I did follow up with a couple emails that I sent as the representative on CalAFCO to the Chair, expressing the concern that the Commission, the Board, as it's currently structured, I think lacks, what I put was, I remain apprehensive that the Board lacks the ability to effectively address these issues or reach consensus on necessary actions to demonstrate CalAFCO's continued value to its members. And I truly, it's unfortunate, but it is, it's true. And I think until they fully understand the significance of the loss of membership, and I'm just telling you a couple things that they don't, there's about more than half of them don't really understand the significance of what's happening. And that just shows the lack of condition that they have. So, that being said, I am a strong supporter of us sending the letter, consistent with some of the other LAFCOs. I think we have great opportunities to collaborate on legislative and educational issues with a different format and structure, at such time that CalAFCO actually wakes up and actually restructures. And the restructure not only includes the recent resignation of the ED, which was actually necessary as one component, but there's a lot more components that need to be done. The Board itself needs to restructure, refocus. They rehired just recently the previous ED, Pamela, to come back and facilitate a strategic planning meeting to start talking about the restructuring. I've had conversations with Pamela quite candidly. She is hesitant herself that it can actually, the ship could be righted. And this is a person that ran it for the last 10 years. And she actually is still connected in that way. So, they've retained her services. They made some financial decisions recently in the Board, one in close session that I can't get into, one that they've hired a temporary Executive Director. And those financial decisions, along with the four that have pulled out, are going to severely hammer CalAFCO from even functioning, because it's going to have a significant impact on them, not only from membership, but fiscally. So, they've got a lot of work to do. If they finally figure it out, they restructure in a way that it shows the value that CalAFCO could provide, then, you know, I think the Board, this Commission should reconsider. But at this time, I don't see that happening, so I support the recommendation. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to ask.
Catherine?
You?
No questions, Derek, I think you, I think you really illustrated that beautifully. I will just say, first of all, I want to clarify, this is just the information item today, so we're not, you know, we don't need to take action, or you're asking us to take action to not renew.
Take action?
Yes, it would be take action to not renew.
And then you also mentioned to redirect resources into something else. That will come back to us later, right?
Yes, yes, that would be, that would be allocated through the budget.
Okay.
So, so right now, all we're going, all we're looking to do is not renew. I fully support that action. From my very first interactions with CalAFCO, when I was fairly new on the Commission and just working my way into leadership, there had been a train wreck. My biggest issue is they consistently advocate in Sacramento for policies that we don't support. Mission creep. You know, increased authority, getting involved in things that LAFCO shouldn't get involved in. And so, I've had, I've had a big, big problem with that. I remember going to my first CalAFCO meeting, they had me a tote bag with a sprawl of LAFCO's logo on it. And as somebody who lives in the suburbs, I take absolute offense to that. There's nothing wrong with living in the suburbs, there's nothing wrong with building suburbs. So, I have nothing good to say about CalAFCO. And I think that the problems that you've experienced, Derek, over these last couple of years are the natural progression of what I believe to be the train wreck of this CalAFCO. So, I fully support this. And then, on the other question of redirecting resources, if we'll see that back later, that's fine. But we're going to want some detail on what exactly that means. I totally support your recommendation.
Commissioner Bresley?
Yeah, there is a question that I had, and I participated in about four of the cases, is how then, if we're not participating, can we control the new organization? And how to make sure that it's effective and accomplishing what we want to have accomplished? Because if you're on the outside, it seems to me you have more difficulty than if you're on the inside, working hard to set something up and getting the support of the, of those that have now resigned. And I agree, it looks like most of the Southern ones will. But I'm just concerned how we're putting ourselves in a position that we lose in this moment in the decision-making.
What do you think we want to get out of CalAFCO? I've never understood why we even, we don't do anything for it.
From what I understand, and this was mostly from when Pamela was there, as my own work went on, going to the Legislature, saying the inflation is being proposed, making sure that what gets approved is consistent with the needs of LAFCO. And the educational programs, I think is, you know, is important so that new Commissioners learn and have an understanding is what is the purpose of LAFCO? And I must admit, it was at the last meeting and at the last conference, was the first time that I heard that the LAFCOs were created to be an extension of the Legislature. And that was the whole purpose, because back in the 60s, as the state was growing, the Legislature couldn't get, be involved in a lot of the details that are going to be required in each of the counties as people were settling and settling land use purposes, boundaries. And that's when I, you know, and so the Legislatures, they created the LAFCOs to be involved in that decision as an extension of them. And I found that interesting, because I hadn't realized that. That's a very different picture of what is the role of the LAFCOs, as opposed to, are we just another commission? That's, you know, in, I don't know, what, you know. And to me, I was surprised, and I'd been, I've been on my COVID for over six years. And it's the first time that I had heard that statement. And I think that's pretty fun to know.
What's your more, your other?
I think it has a purpose, and I think it's an important purpose, but is it effective? And that's what I think we're talking about, not so much is it necessary? I think it's very important to meet other people, and I think it's unfortunate, but it appears to me, there's not very good communication. And I think even here, we can improve our communication. It was very disappointing to me that, for example, Gavin left. We didn't know, and the only reason we knew is that someone at the regional meeting brought it up. And we probably would have said goodbye to Gavin, but nothing was ever said. So, I think, and that's just one, and I'm not the only person. And I think one person who's not present did complain to me that there's not real good communication. So, I think that's, that's an important thing. We could work on that ourselves, and I think they certainly need to, from everything that I'm hearing. When I went, I feel the issue that Doug brought up, which is the issue of making decisions. I think cities want to make their own decisions. We don't want to be told, and I'm speaking specifically of Reno, which you may think is very separate from this, but actually it's not. Because you, that's how you meet people and you change their, you start communicating. And so, I'm disappointed that we wouldn't have that opportunity. And I do have a question, did you say that Los Angeles was also leaving?
They left, yes.
They did leave, okay. So...
They will not, let's clarify, they will not renew as of June.
Okay. Well, my point is, I think there's enough evidence that there's more, that there's unhappiness, obviously. There's a change in leadership, obviously, the Director, I mean, has changed. But I don't think that the, from what we're hearing, that the, when we, here's what I have the problem, I guess. When you say that they don't get it, I'm not sure if you're speaking of the administrative group as opposed to the people who attend, the greater body, the rank and file, you might say. Were you, were you thinking that, you're saying just the leadership doesn't know? Or do you think those people don't know it too? That things are not appropriate and need to be changed?
So, you have an executive committee that's totally out of focus of what's really important about CalAFCO, and you have a Commission that's recently been brought on that carries that same sentiment. I think it's a point of clarification to Catherine's point earlier, is remember, we are still members as of through June. June, we're not renewing our membership.
I'm getting it.
Notice of budgets accordingly. I have been requested personally by the facilitator, Pamela, for the Strategic Planning Meeting to be a participant, because she says you're the only one that's actually woke the sleeping bear and is not afraid to speak up, and I really need somebody that's going to be candid. And so, I plan on participating to give them that. But we've already done this three times, Catherine, so it's, they're not getting it. But we're, we'll go ahead and participate as a member. But I'm just telling you, it will not be adjusted within three months that we're talking about. Let them figure it out, if it takes them a couple of years, maybe we'll get back in. But at this point, I don't see, I don't see that happening.
Just, if I could just step in one really quick here. There is a fund, and what I'd like to know is roughly, what are the funds that are dedicated to this between membership? And do we pay expenses for travel for our members to go? Can you just give a summary?
Yes, so we have, we do have a CalAFCO membership that is, that is for $12,000. And then, I know from the previous budget, we did allocate approximately $30,000 for attending the workshops for staff and then also for Commissioners, as there's two different, two different Conferences. With the redirection of some of those funds, based on what we're working on, it wouldn't be the entire amount, because what those efforts would really work for would be with meetings with the Southern Region LAFCOs and coming up with educational workshops for staff and the Commission as well. But...
And what about legislative platform?
And that's another, another area that the LAFCOs will be working on in terms of how we would get involved with the Legislature, in terms of pushing legislation or reviewing legislation, because now it would have, it would be done in collaboration with the Southern Region LAFCOs.
On that note, let me just clarify, what's really important to understand, the recent legislation in the last two years that have been done have all been, the heavy lifting's been done by the Southern Regions. It wasn't CalAFCO, it wasn't the Board. It was actually done by the EDs here locally, or Executive Offices here locally, have done the heavy lifting. So, I think, to Doug's point, it's going to be more focused on what works for the Southern Regions more than the Northern Regions, okay?
Commissioner Davert, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Doug, first, Sarah, thank you for all your hard work on this issue, and I really appreciate it. I feel like I'm in a position, just the way I felt about the League of Cities, where the Board just went off on its own agenda and not advocating or sticking to their mission in representing the cities. And I know that Orange County cities had a history of pulling out of Cal City, and we went on and formed an organization our own that have advocated for cities, and I sense...
Just to your point, Derek, you know, here, the Southern Region LAFCOs are leaving, and if we've been the one doing the heavy lifting, I can see that even if we were to leave, and I am supporting this motion, or upcoming motion, to leave. I think to your point, Catherine, I think we, as the Southern Region, will probably continue to work together to advocate for our region. And I'm hoping that the financial hit to the organization will wake them up and say, perhaps, we need to change course, otherwise, we can't do what we want to do anyways, and we need to start listening. I know that worked with Cal Cities many years ago, and I think that it probably will happen this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Davert?
Well, I've got a lot to say, but I'm in the interest of time, I've got to hold my breath on this a little bit. And I'll just, I'll make the motion that we terminate our membership by June 30th and send that letter as soon as possible. And then on the second question about redirecting the resources, staff will bring that back to us with some ideas at some point. But my motion is that we terminate our membership. I'll second that motion.
And the motion is second, any other comments? Go ahead, call them, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll join the others.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that is unanimous?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. There you have it. Thank you for that robust discussion, and I think that is helpful, and I think that we can be, the representation of our region will probably be better represented this way for the next little bit. And thank you for the work you're doing, Derek, and will continue to do to see if something can be done between now and June, so that will be as of June, thank you. Sure. Scott?
You know, and I mentioned it, I'm surprised to learn that, you know, when I was... So, it was one of your, somebody from your agents, from your firm, that made that statement. Did I misunderstand, or is, are we an extension of the Legislature? Is that the whole purpose that the LAFCOs were created?
Yeah, that is, that is technically right. The, in every state, those Legislatures are charged, they have plenary power to set local boundaries. And so, what the California Legislature has done is delegated that authority to LAFCOs in each county. So, we are technically an extension of the state and not a, not a local agency.
I think it's important to note, that doesn't confer any special powers on LAFCOs. We're not legislators, we're not part of the state. The Legislature has insisted that all 58 counties have LAFCOs. Interesting, since the city and county of San Francisco are completely co-terminous and have no boundary issues whatsoever, but they're required to have a LAFCO. The county of Alpine, which doesn't have a single incorporated entity within it, only has a couple of thousand residents, eleven who are LAFCO Commissioners.
Maybe they'll change them.
So, but the fact that, you know, being in quote, "an extension of the Legislature", is, is, has no significance whatsoever. And it's...
And that's I misunderstand, that an assignment of LAFCOs can only be overturned and a hope that it has to be done. It's not, it's not a case where somebody can just say, well, we disagree, and go their own way. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, your, your decisions are binding on all affected agencies.
So, there's significance.
So, it is significant then. If somebody disagrees, they're going to have to take...
If somebody disagrees, they're gonna have to take it to court to change it.
Let the lawyer speak on that.
That's also true of city councils, that's true of planning commissions, it's true of a lot of agencies. It's nothing special about LAFCOs.
Okay. You're educated, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have LAFCO in Water System Consolidation Report Update. Do we have any public speakers that were on the last one?
No public speakers on the last one. For this one, we do have one, Heather Baez from, thank you. Please.
Morning Chair Buckner, Members of the Commissioner, my name is Heather Baez, I'm the Director of Government Municipal Water District, Orange County. This is an issue that we have, we in the water community have been watching closely as providing safe, affordable, clean drinking water for all of us. And anytime the State Board gets involved, State Water Board gets involved, a little bit of pause. So we watch it a little bit more closely. So we have been doing that. But in reviewing this particular report and item, I don't believe, and I don't think that it applies to any small systems here in Orange County. And I'm wondering if, and I'm speaking before the staff report, so I don't know. So I'm asking the question, it does not appear that it applies to any systems in Orange County. And I'm wondering if staff can provide further input and/or confirm this, and if that's part of your report, please.
Thank you, very much appreciate that. Okay, with that.
Policy analyst Amy Diaz present that staff report.
And Miss Diaz, if it works to go ahead and to address that, that would be terrific, thank you.
So good morning Commissioners. The item before you is an update on an item our executive officer presented in March of 2024. It, it was a summary of a report done by the UC Berkeley Division of Agricultural and Natural Resources on the human right to water and the consolidation of small water systems. And the report highlighted an opportunity for more communication and coordination between state and local regulators and LAFCOs. And so through this report, there was a group that was formed comprised of other LAFCO staff, author of the Berkeley Report, and policy advocates working to see if there's a way that we can work through these communication opportunities. And so through this, through the discussions, there have been three areas for proposed changes to the CKH Act. The first of these recommendations is to provide LAFCOs with the ability to initiate annexations and reorganizations, specifically with small water systems that are not providing timely and adequate water supply. With that, we would also, LAFCOs would be required to hold a public meeting within the affected community so that they would be able to give input. The second of these recommendations would be in regards to MSR determinations, communicating those with the affected agencies. And so that would mean holding a public hearing whenever there is a determination or commission decision, and also notifying the affected agencies. I do want to note that the Orange County LAFCO does already hold its practice for this. The third proposed change would be to include private water systems, mobile home parks, and mutual water companies in water systems, sorry, in MSR determinations, when reviewing dispositions and corporate needs within within spheres of influence. And so this is not currently recommended. We also do not have any information from the, any mobile home parks that provide water system supplies. So this would just give us more information when we're reviewing those determinations. So as of right now, the group is continuing to work through any sort of bill language. We are seeking an author for, to introduce these changes, but something is in process. And so as of right now, the group is still just working through those things and will provide the commission with updates. Especially if there is a bill that is introduced. And so this is a receivable file, requiring no option of addition, and I can, if you have a little for questions, please.
Thank you. Oh, I'm shocked. Monsieur Dabbard.
Director of a water agency.
I fully expected you to comment on this.
Look, I thought this report was awful and overreaching when it was proposed. I find it to be even worse so now that it's before us. And I want to just hope that the commission keeps a heads up on this, because we should probably take a very strong opposed position on all of this. This actually dovetails beautifully with the discussion we just had about Calafco. About going out and advocating for things that we would never in a billion years support. We have said here at Orange County LAFCO for the last, since I've been on the commission, that we don't initiate anything. We don't initiate these things. These are things that people and organizations come to us with a proposal to consolidate organic. We do everything we can to facilitate that, we're a resource to our local agencies. We're water experts, we're never going to be water experts, and who are we to say, we're gonna go out and just initiate a takeover of a, of a water agency? We talked about mutual water companies, mutual water companies are private water companies that are owned by their customers. Why would we get involved in that? The state of California has an entire regulatory framework on water systems, water quality. I bet you can speak to this better than I can, but we don't need LAFCO to get involved. If the system is substandard, the state water agencies are going to come in and say, hey, that's not a LAFCO issue, that's a, that's a state regulatory issue, it's a public. Whole thing really bizarre, and it's, it's exactly, it's a perfect illustration of what we were just talking about with Derek, about this, this group think in Northern California that is advocating and we would never in a billion years support. So since this is a receivable file, that's all I'm gonna say, but I just hope that if there are any further developments, or if there is any legislation that actually is proposed, we immediately get an opportunity to vote.
Really quick. I'll let you go ahead and say something Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, I'll be good. When I, when I saw this report, immediately it came to mind how the Turner Report on housing and why the state should just eliminate local control had finally creeped into legislation, and here we are today. Same with the Spur organization's presentation to Northern California's various Chamber of Commerce and City Council about housing crisis and why the state should just eliminate city control. Here we are looking at a report from, okay, and I graduated from Berkeley, so I know how liberal we are, and, and how out there we are. And in looking at this, it, it just draws the same, you know, path that has led to where we are in housing. And the state's water policy is completely a mess. And I see this as the state couldn't figure out how to make things right. They couldn't for the last 30 years to actually have a sound water policy, working with all the water groups. So they figure, and, and I think Catherine, this is exactly what you brought up that I didn't know, which was, well, LAFCO is an extension of the state. Well, then why don't we just use LAFCO to deal with an issue that we couldn't deal with for the past 30, 40 years? And to, for water policy, but honestly, this is not LAFCO's jurisdiction, we should not get into it. This whole mission creep thing will just get us into a whole lot of trouble. So if there is a legislation on this, I would be advocating for it in a proposed position.
Here, so I knew you were gonna go right to housing, which is why I did what I did, because it does, it does have that. However, do you feel that them pushing decision-making down to a level achieves local input?
Not necessarily, I mean definitely, you know, just because it's local, it's not local input. But I think to what Doug's point is, a lot of these water agencies are privately owned. And we already have state regulation over drinking water standard. The fact that they are bringing up issues about drinking water and wastewater management, well, we have all that. So what is it that we really want to achieve, other than, wow, we just want to be able to use LAFCO as an agency to force state policies down of these local agencies that they couldn't do otherwise at the state level? You know, I, I worked on the California Water Plan 2020, but I did that back in 1997. And I also worked on the California Federal Water Plan, which was also known as CalFed, and, and really to establish a long-term water policy. That whole entire system broke apart after millions of dollars, and I can't even tell you how many, that brings closing down apart. And if that couldn't be done, I think this is the bare way. It's so fractured right now after that effort, and they can't get it going, they're using LAFCO. But this to me is a mission creep.
Representing the water, also I, you know, I'm director of the water, water agency, is that what I read, to me, in Orange County, we don't have the issue, you know? And it's unfortunate, but we had the state trying to define something, or in normal state, because I must admit, when I go to the Calafco conference and talk to people from other counties, they're really quite small. You know, they have fewer people in the county than we have, and we only represent 50,000 people in our agency. So there is some issues. The question becomes, how should it be addressed? And I don't think it's something for LAFCOs to do, but then again. And I, I can see the dilemma, but for us, we just have to really pay attention. We don't have the issues here in County, and we're dealing with Orange County, and is something to watch? Make sure it doesn't interfere with how we operate. And, and, and not necessarily support, we don't want them to support, but we don't necessarily have to say it is something that is, shouldn't be done. Water is like, I mean, it's part of our responsibility to make sure that people do at least have water available. Hopefully, and it's clean, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I too have a comment. I think that I agree with what has been said previously, because it's not our role to go off and take care of things. Right now, we do, the MSRs are done, but in some instances, they're not even presented. And in our county, we do it. But I'm telling you, in other counties, that is not happening. We also can name a major water district in another county that hasn't even had audits. Why, why aren't those things addressed? That's not our job. If they, if those things aren't being taken care of, why would you take on other things when you're not even doing this well? So if you know what I'm referring to. Pardon my simple base. Very good example of things not being well done. So I, I have to concur that I, I can't see this as a positive step.
Any other comments? Did we address the comment that does not apply?
I didn't address that comment. We do have approximately 11 water mutuals, some that are in unincorporated areas. But I did want to make that point, that in terms of small water systems, it would be for the, at least for Orange County, would be for those waters, water mutuals.
Okay, thank you. And then, and since it's a LAFCO's participating in this, do we know who was on the, in the working room?
Yes, Sacramento, LAFCO, Napa, LAFCO, San Diego, LAFCO, we're all involved in this.
Thank you.
Receivable file.
Got it. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and receive that and file it and be aware of it. And thank you for the comments today Heather, it's well, appreciate you coming. Okay. Next. Okay, next we have Commissioner's comments. Go around the room, nothing? Nothing?
I was very.
Really? Well, we, I know that our chair wasn't here today, and it was a, you know, I appreciate being, filling in, being able to fill in for him, and we wish him well. And I'm not, and we want all the best, and we're here, that's why we cover each other. I, Don and I have covered each other in lots of other meetings, so happy to do it. Okay, next up, we have our executive officer. No? Okay. Informational items and announcements. Mr. Attorney, any other, do you have any questions that you wanted to present to our, our legal counsel? I thought you had something, Mr. Dabbard.
We handle it off the record, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay? All right, that being said, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to at nine on the dot, thank you. I don't think so. I, I think that, I think Wagner runs a much more efficient meeting.
Lots to deal with, we did it.